Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, April 27, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you Chair. Commissioner Erickson?
Here and accounted for.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair Badami?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join Vice Chair Kane as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without division, liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages public participation in the process with verbal and written comments. To speak on any item, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. Matters relating to agenda items will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not on the agenda will be heard under verbal communications. We have a desk item for item number eight. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence? Yes. We have several requested continuances this evening. Items number two through five are continued, and I'm going to look for one motion for that from the commissioners and leave item six separate for now. Do we have a motion to continue? Commissioner? All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Kane, seconds. All in favor? Passes unanimously. As we continue with that item, I actually... Okay. All right. We will also talk about the minutes, which is on the consent calendar, and that is item number one, approval of the minutes for March 16, 2016, and April 13 of 2016. So we have a motion to approve. Commissioner Hudes?
I move to approve the minutes of those two dates.
Yes, Vice Chair Kane.
On the question of the minutes, in particular, the minutes of April 13, 2016, we continued two items. And the minutes give an elaboration of getting up to that point, and says the chair discussed, the commission discussed, and there was a motion to continue. And I thought anybody reading this on item three and on item four might like a short discussion of why we in fact continued. It just leaves the reader hanging as if our decision was arbitrary. I wondered to, through the chair, to staff if we could elaborate. I mean, we've spent three pages getting to that point, and then boom, it's gone, and nobody knows why.
Development Director, Mr. Paulson, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. So these are action minutes, so we do not elaborate. We will look at opportunities to provide further definition in the future. I will speak with the clerk to have her comment and weigh in how they do their minutes, and even if we do ours a little bit differently and add a little bit more information, I will just make sure that that's appropriate.
Historic Preservation Committee gives information. I'm just looking at the two sets of minutes and why they're so different. Thank you. I'll second the motion.
Okay. So I was not in attendance for the April 13 hearing, but I did view the tape and can attest to the accuracy of the minutes. So I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. All right. I am going to go back to the requested continuance, which was item number six, and that would be the North Forty. I am going to look to either our town attorney or to Joel Paulson to respond to that item.
Thank you Chair. As with items two through five, which were requested continuances, item number six is a requested continuance, so there will be no discussion this evening. For item number six, the North Forty, there will be further public hearings, and at those public hearings, there will be opportunities for verbal communications and comments. Additionally, as we go through the process and even prior to setting that hearing and holding that hearing, people can continue to submit any comments they have in writing.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
Yes, thank you. I had a question about that. Is the hearing you're referring to, the proposed joint study session, will the public speak at that, or is it another hearing of the Planning Commission that you're referring to?
I'm referring to another hearing of the Planning Commission. The details of the study session have not been finalized yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I will look to the commissioners. Do we have a motion to continue item number six? Commissioner Erickson?
So moved, and I understand that we're continuing to a date uncertain.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you look puzzled. Go ahead.
Perhaps it would be helpful if we stated a reason for the continuance. In my understanding, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, we can't make a decision until the town council makes a pending decision, for example, on the... Well, some things they have to make decisions on. In any event, that hasn't been done yet, and therefore, we're not going to have an hearing tonight. I just think we ought to have some reasons. If anybody's here for that, they understand we're not just doing it to do it.
And I can start, and if the town attorney wants to weigh in further. Obviously, the action that the council took last week in reference to the story pole exception being denied, and then the request for a study session, has further necessitated continuing this item, and so we will work to resolve that and then come forward when it's appropriate.
Commissioner Erickson, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. All right. So did we have a second on that?
Second.
Commissioner O'Donnell, a second. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members also serve on various town subcommittees. Do commissioners have any reports to share from recent committee meetings? Vice Chair Kane?
I forgot. Commissioner O'Donnell and I met today, Historic Preservation. We dealt with a request from 135 Johnson Avenue, which was continued, 54 Los Gatos Boulevard, which was accepted, 334 Los Gatos Boulevard, which I think was approved with modification. 16982 Kennedy was continued for further clarification, and 94 Hernandez got a favorable review as the third time back, and we need to tweak it one more time, and then we think that project can go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're moving on to verbal communications. I do not have any cards for anyone wishing to speak to us tonight on any item that's not on the agenda. So I will ask, does anybody want to talk to us other than an agenda item? See no one? We have a hand up. Mr. Moses, come on up. I know you by name.
Mr. Moses, if you could please hold, I'm not sure the mic is on. Ms. Puga, could you check that? Oh yeah, there you go. Unaccustomed to public speaking, as I am. No, I just wanted to... The reason why my wife and I came tonight, because we have been in correspondence with quite a few people, as you know, and there was no public comment tonight, but what my... I just want to make sure, in coming here tonight for the Planning Commission, because you know, and it was mentioned regarding that there's going to be a study session between you and the town council, and coming back to us with more information, public seems to be up in arms, which we are, but we need a lot of clarification on really what is taking place with the North Forty. Things been going through the process, so I'm just asking you to please be really diligent in addressing all of the issues, the impacts to the community, to the traffic, to the schools, for the density of the project. And one thing I'd like to have you do, the next time you drive south on Highway 17 and you come into the town of Los Gatos, you're approaching the town of Los Gatos, like thousands do every day, just please look at what you see on the left-hand side of the road, what the nets up and things like that. It does not represent this town at all, and I think that's what everybody's really up in arms about. That's one thing. It does not... I mean, it's not the town of Los Gatos anymore when you do that. So the presence of that facade as people drive into this, I hope we don't have to see that for the next generation. Number two is that if you do live in Los Gatos and you're traveling through our towns and you live close to the schools and see what's going on there, and the impact, and the overcrowding, and like I mentioned in one of the times that I spoke, I'm a Realtor, as many of you know. There are schools being impacted right now that people don't even know about, even Realtors don't know about it, because they're just taking place. The Alta Vista School, third grade is impacted for next year, no more new applicants for that particular grade. Union Middle School, no more applicants for next year, new people moving into that area can get their kids into the schools. So it is taking place. And as you know and I know, progress keeps taking place, and all of a sudden, here in Silicon Valley, in the last seven years since 2008, we had a dip like we always do in real estate, and then it kind of goes up to a peak. All of a sudden, there's been this big explosion of people coming into this area, and it has just overwhelmed everybody. I don't want to see it in the town of Los Gatos, and we're going to do everything possible to try to work with the landowners and everybody to allow them to develop their land, but to do it in the right way for the town of Los Gatos and for the people of Los Gatos, and for the future residents and our kids. So thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Moses, thank you for your comments. I need you to fill out a speaker card, please.
You have one filled out, I just didn't bring it up. My wife said there was no speaking.
Okay, okay. Vice Chair Kane?
Mr. Moses, in the form of a question. Do you know that SB 50 prohibits us from doing anything about a residential project with respect to the schools? State law prohibits us from doing anything about that. However, at the...
Vice Chair Kane, I believe we're supposed to engage in debate with the speakers during verbal communications, even if it's in the form of a question?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Any of the questions?
Nope.
It's not on the agenda.
Nope. Thank you.
Okay, we communicate.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just for the record, I would want the speaker to know and others to know that there will be three entities present at the meeting, at least as contemplated. That is to say, the school districts, Planning Commission, and the town council. So I just wanted to make it clear, the school districts will have real input at the next meeting.
Yes. I understood that from the last meeting with the town council, that that is going to be taken into consideration, and especially trying to bring in the other school district, Campbell Union along with Los Gatos Union. So, I mean, at least we're talking about it, so hopefully we can have some resolve to that.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. We appreciate it. Would anybody else like to speak to us? See no one. We're going to move to our new public hearing, which is item number seven, and I do not have any speaker cards for the applicant. Are they here? Okay. All right. I would call your name, but I don't know who you are. All right. So item number seven is 126 Clover Way, Architecture and Site Application, S-15-059, requesting approval to demolish an existing single-family residence and to construct a new single-family residence on property zoned R-1-10, APN 532-15-005. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Ms. Puga, I understand you're providing us with a staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. The applicant is proposing to demolish a 2,219 square foot single residence and construct a 3,775 square foot single-story residence with a 522 square foot detached garage. Pursuant to town code, the maximum square footage for the lot is 3,803 square feet. The project is referred to the Planning Commission because it would result in the largest residence in the immediate neighborhood with regards to square footage and FAR. The proposed residence would be 765 square feet larger than the largest residence. The town's consulting architect reviewed the plans, visited the site, and commented that the proposed design will have a more modern appearance compared to the other homes, but is well-designed with forms, scale, and materials that are compatible. The consulting architect had three recommendations for the project, of which the applicant has incorporated two into the plan set before you this evening. The applicant has chosen not to incorporate the consultant's recommendation to modify the roof material, stating that the metal roof is consistent with the design of the home and the architectural style. Staff recommends denial of the application based on the size of the home in comparison to others in the immediate neighborhood, and the fact that the proposed roof material does not relate to the scale and texture of those in the neighborhood. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puga. Are there questions of staff at this time? See none. Thank you very much for your presentation. All right. We will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the commission. I will be calling Mr... From the audience. I don't know your name still.
Hi, my name is Michael Page. I'm the property owner at 126 Clover Way. Just want to thank everyone for allowing us to present tonight, and I also want to thank everybody for the gift of about five hours. When I saw that we were on the agenda as item number seven and following, the North Forty, I packed a small sleeping bag and a little Cheez-It snacks in there. Anyways, to get back onto the topic at hand, our house. When my wife and I both moved into Surrey Farms, we fell in love with the style of the neighborhood, the scope of the ranch homes, the single-story feel, and also the quiet, secluded nature of the neighborhood. The neighbors were also an added bonus. And when we purchased the house, we always knew that we were going to be doing a remodel project, and as we started developing our family, I have three kids, a five, a three, and a zero, all girls, it became clear that we needed more room than the house had. It's a three-bedroom house. And in addition, my wife and I both work from home. She's a radiologist, and I do business development and anesthesia at Good Samaritan Hospital. And part of that includes a lot of time at home doing business work and requiring business offices. As I think Commissioner Kane can address, when he walked in on my wife reading films in a small X-converted laundry room, he probably got an idea of what we're dealing with right now. Most of my business meetings are in the garage. So in creating this home, it was important to us to, number one, be consistent with the size and scale and scope of the neighborhood. And when we created this home, we tried to do that. We wanted to keep a one-story platform. We did that. We wanted to use materials that were consistent in the neighborhood, and we did that. With regards to the roofing material, the standing seam metal roof appealed to us on this particular home, because it is a more contemporary home, and as it was noted in the consulting architect's letter, yes, it is a contemporary home, and the roof is consistent and well-designed, is most consistent with that style of home. The request to change the roof would result in what we felt to be kind of a Frankenstein home, where you take, you know, a well-designed home with a roof that is, and a roofing material that's consistent, and change it over to something that is inconsistent with the design of the home. As far as what I've done here, and I can pass these out, I have... They're enough for all the commissioners. What I've done is I've outlined the use of this type of roof in just our immediate area. There are seven homes in the... Seven homes and structures in the area within 3,000 feet of our home by the crow flies. So it's not like this is an inconsistent and completely novel type of roofing material within the home. In addition, when... Our home is one of the only homes in the immediate area that doesn't have a pool, and most of our neighbors have photovoltaic or solar water panels on the street side of their roofs. So regardless of what type of material they have, you're looking at solar panels. So we felt we wanted to maintain consistency with the design and put a roof on that would be most consistent with that and look best. As far as the size of the home, yes, we are going over... We are building the largest home in the area, but please keep in mind that none of the houses in our immediate area have been rebuilt. They were all built in the 1960s, and in fact, this is the exact type of home that I grew up in. Three of us in one bedroom. Dad went to work, mom stayed home and raised the kids. Now it's a different deal. We have two working parents, both of whom are working at home. We have three, our growing family, three now, maybe more to come, please know. But... And then also, in addition, having the... Because family is important to us, having my wife's mother come down to help with the children in our dual-career roles, and having a nanny quarters for her. Because of the cost of living down here, it's prohibitive for them to move from their current location, where they're retired in Sacramento, down here to Los Gatos. So this kind of comes to where we are with our home. We're being judged and compared against homes that were built in the 1960s to a 1960s lifestyle. What we did when we designed our home, designed this particular residence, was we followed the rules put forth of Los Gatos, and that's what you see before you. We wanted to, you know, the buildable area to lot size, and that's what we did. We didn't know that there was another X-factor in there as well. So is there anything else that you wanted to say?
Eugene Sakai, architect for the Pages, and I think to Dr. Page's last point about the floor area ratio issue, it was fairly disheartening to us as a client and architect to have worked extensively with staff over a period of really months, and almost over a year, and to have the end result of that be a recommendation for denial. You know, certainly, I think the reasons and the precedent for it is probably something you've heard before. But from where I sit as an architect, to recommend denial on the basis of something that is not necessarily straight out of the zoning ordinance, that being the maximum FAR of older homes in the neighborhood, when our project meets the FAR standards, has elicited support otherwise, design-wise, from the town's consulting architect, and we've satisfied all of the other technical considerations from city staff, as I said, is fairly disheartening, and I realize it poses to the commission somewhat of a high bar for you to consider our project in light of that recommendation for denial and consider overturning that recommendation. So one thing, as an architect, when we set out to design projects is, you know, we do outreach to the planning department, we look into the zoning ordinance. It really... The type of information about the floor areas and sizes and lot areas of existing homes is not something that's readily available to us on the outside of the city's databases and proprietary information of applications that have been submitted in years past. And so I guess that's why this information about us being in violation of a past precedent came as a bit of a surprise and a discouraging one at that, so, yeah.
This was also important to us. Kristin and I did not want to have the mausoleum on the hillside, right? It is a big house, but in doing that, with the story poles in place and with the planning package, we went to every single neighbor around us, eight neighbors. We sat down with them, we went over the planning package, and unanimously, they thought it was a well-designed house, they thought it would be an asset to the neighborhood, and they supported the project. None of them said, "That's a monster. That looks out of place in our neighborhood." And it's consistent with the consulting architect. Again, that said that this house is in design and scale consistent with the neighborhood. So I just wanted to mention that we have worked with the neighbors and made sure that from a neighborhood standpoint, it works.
All right. You still have time remaining, if you wish.
Okay. One last thing, that is a minor point, but something to consider with regards to our particular lot. Our lot is one of the few lots in that cul-de-sac area and the surrounding area that does not have a pool. So when you're looking at lot size, buildable lot size, our home is actually better proportioned than most of the homes in our immediate area with regards to, you know, what they're even able to do with their buildable lot size and buildable lot area. So I think that's all I have to say.
All right.
So in summary, you know, we're planning a home to meet our needs. We certainly consulted with town code, and we're designing a home that was consistent with town code and the rules, the objective rules that were put forth, and we used, you know, not only a consulting architect, but also neighbors to make sure that what we had designed was appropriate. And so with that, the materials that we use are certainly, there's precedent in the immediate neighborhood to use those materials. So I appreciate your consideration of our project. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sakai, please be sure to fill out a speaker card for us, and don't go away yet. I'm going to look to the commissioners to see if they have any questions for you.
Sure.
Commissioner Hudes?
I have a few questions. One is just a detail in terms of the Arborist report, and on page three of 27, there's an item about protecting the magnolia tree.
Yeah.
And I wondered if you've agreed to use the trenchless method that's recommended for drainage to protect that magnolia?
Yeah. That magnolia is the most beautiful magnolia in that Surrey Farms neighborhood, and it's actually the highlight of our... We actually built the house and designed the house around that particular tree, so yes, we're going to do everything we can to maintain it and protect it. Yeah.
Thank you. I had some other questions about architecture, but I don't know if other commissioners...
I do have a question about architecture too, so I'll go ahead with one question, and then I'll circle back to you. So I appreciate your concerns and your reasonings for wanting a metal roof, and I believe it's more or less for environmental reasons from reading your letter. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So why wouldn't you consider metal shingles as opposed to the standing seam roof as suggested by Larry Cannon in Exhibit 7?
Well, from a personal standpoint, we really liked the look of the standing seam. We thought it was a clean look, it went well with the contemporary ranch design of the home, and we really liked the way that it interfaced with the materials, as far as the stucco stone and then the nice, clean standing seam roof. In addition, we're planning on doing solar panels on the back south side of the lot, which faces our backyard, and the standing seam roof is really the most ideal for clipping on solar panels without having to penetrate through. With actual shingles, you'd have to penetrate through and then get into a situation where then there's no point in having a metal shingle. You know, I'd be worried about penetration issues there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
So on the roof, and I find this very helpful, but I'm getting it today, was staff made aware of these other comparable homes that have metal seam roofs as well?
I don't know if the consulting architect was. I put it in our original, in our letter, as a kind of parenthetical point, but I don't know if I was...
So staff had been aware of those comparable homes? They weren't in our defined immediate neighborhood, so that was a message to the applicant, but they were reviewed by staff.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms of the roof, I understand the argument that this type of roof uniquely matches the design of the home. Maybe I could hear a little more from the architect on that as to why this matches the home and why other neighborhood-compatible roofs do not match the design of the home?
Well, certainly from a functional standpoint, any of the suggested roof materials could work. Asphalt shingle, wood shake, you know, and the roof form itself, I think, is versatile enough to accept any variety of materials, but really, you know, what we were trying to reflect with this design in concept is a house that is formally, and when I say formally, I mean in terms of its form and its massing, tied into the predominantly ranch-style character of the 1960s homes, but reflects more of a contemporary exterior palette of materials. I will say that in my 20-plus years of practice, mostly in residential, I've seen a dramatic shift in clients' tastes over the last probably 10 years. I mean, 10 years ago, proposing a metal roof in front of a commission like yours in Los Gatos, I think, would really be unheard of, but we're being asked by clients all over the Bay Area and the Peninsula, you know, for this type of product on houses that are oftentimes much more contemporary than this, and I feel that a house should be reflective of its time. I feel like the metal roof, you know, as for the reasons Dr. Page mentioned, is reflective of... of current taste, as was wood shake and shingle, you know, back in the 60s and 70s. And so I think in terms of just an overall palette, you know, the clean lines, the vertical ribbing, all of that reinforces some of the things that are on the walls of the house, you know, the wood, the joints between the wood, the score joints and the stucco. The windows themselves will be metal, and so there's a tie between the wall material and the roof material. And for the environmental reasons Dr. Page mentioned before, and also cost reasons, I think as the popularity of metal roofs have increased, they've become more cost-friendly and more within the reach of homeowners. And that's why you're starting to see them much more commonly these days. And I think it is a reflective material for a contemporary home for many reasons.
Thank you. That's very helpful to me to understand the rationale, not just the statement that it's compatible, but the rationale behind it.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Kane?
Mr. Sakai, I appreciate changing times, changing values, changing, but the language hasn't changed. And you must know that. I mean, the proposed metal roof is grounds for denial. The largest house in the neighborhood is grounds for denial. The fact that it doesn't look like the houses in the immediate neighborhood is grounds for denial. I don't make up the laws. I apply them. I can't bend them. I can't change them. I apply them. I'm just, sometimes I get flabbergasted. I go into a beautiful couple's home with these beautiful children running around, and then I've got to maybe not make them happy, and that drives me crazy. We have language that says, you know, "Do not be the largest house in the neighborhood." And this isn't a scooch of a house. The square footage on the neighboring houses is 2,200, 2,400, 2,300, 30, 2,100, 2,500, 26, 29, and yours is 3,775. That's not even close. That's a, gee, maybe they're not looking. And I, it's upsetting, and I wish this was otherwise. That's it.
Any further questions? All right. Commissioner Hudes?
I had another question about architecture, and I know there were comments about the garage. The garage seems to have a different style to it than the residence. And I was wondering if you could explain to us a little bit about the thinking on the garage and why it wasn't connected to the residence under maybe one roof, you know, kind of thereby reducing the footprint? Because I think there's a space in between the residence and the garage as well. So it seems to be taking up more of a footprint of the lot by doing that. And it seems it would potentially eliminate sort of the add-on sort of box feel of the garage and be more compatible with the neighborhood.
Sure. That's a great question. So the garage was designed to meet the particular ordinance on accessory structures, and as such is required to be a certain distance from the house and to have no more than a certain roof element connecting the two structures. And the advantage of an accessory structure is that you are afforded some relief on setbacks. In this case, it would be really a rear setback. So by designing a more modestly scaled structure with certain square footage limitations, we actually chose not to put a roof on it in order to scale the structure down, knowing that it was an accessory structure. We could have actually put a roof on it, but chose not to in order to reduce the scale.
Commissioner Hudes?
So as a follow-up, if the size of the residence were reduced, would it be possible to include the garage and not have it as an accessory structure?
Yeah. I mean, in concept, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions from commissioners, anybody in the audience would like to speak on this? I can invite some public comments, but I don't see any. So we're back to you. You've got more time, if you like.
Sure.
Five minutes?
Sure. To Commissioner Kane's point, I appreciate you coming out and spending the time to at least evaluate the site. I understand your concerns. My, I guess one of my thoughts is, you know, the town has objective measures against which we're, you know, you can design a building or design a new building. As I said before, the homes by which we're being judged and by which we are adjacent are homes that were built in the 1960s and have never been rebuilt. We all know what the cost of rebuilding in Los Gatos is, and to swap out a home for a home doesn't make a lot of sense from a financial standpoint. And that's why, honestly, none of those homes have been rebuilt. But I'll tell you, when I look at my neighbors, and I'm thinking of three in particular, on their 2,400-square-foot homes, their 30, you know, 2,800-square-foot homes, all their cars are parked outside because they're using their garages as offices. Okay? So I understand the idea of a large home and a not-large home. But when you look at the home from the outside, I think you can argue that five feet up towards a magnolia tree and a modest amount towards the front, and that's what people see. When we tried to design this, we tried to include square footage in areas that, number one, weren't going to affect the neighbors, and number two, were noticeable to us and onto parts of our lot that were not usable. So our backside lot, our western-facing lot, which is dirt space now, that's where the majority of our expansion was. And then we captured an overhang that was useless to us in terms of capturing more space. So yes, it is a large home, but I think from the street-side impact, and the neighbors will agree, that the design they like, even though it may be different from theirs, and number two, the size and scale is consistent and not offensive at all. And in fact, people have, again, I'm going to say, they have unanimously embraced this design. When you look at our home currently, it's the only red brick home in the area. And so actually, it's more inconsistent with the surrounding homes than any. The person that built it was the mason that did the whole Surry Farms thing. So I guess he had some leftover brick from San Quentin, and he built our home. And so it's, in fact, the ugliest home in the area because its materials are most inconsistent with the surrounding homes. Thank you.
Vice Chair Kane, excuse me, you still have five minutes to complete. Two more? Two more? Would you like to continue talking before we ask you questions?
I think I'm, I think the point that, I think you understand the point that I was trying to make.
We have your point. Vice Chair Kane has a question for you.
I understand what you're saying. And I'm very empathetic and very disconcerted that I can't find a way to immediately provide you, when my job is to protect the whole town, with language that is designed to protect the whole town and all of the citizens. And the largest house and the 225 comparisons for immediate neighborhood are words that we went to great lengths to get into residential design guidelines 15 years ago. And I've got the sticky-wicket job of needing to protect those words. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. You can sit down now. We will now close the public testimony portion of the hearing and ask if any commissioners have questions, comments, or a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just have some comments before I hear from everybody else. But I agree with Commissioner Kane. When you, it's not like a secret what our design guidelines say. And clearly, this building does not meet the design guidelines. We're one to simply say, because of the change in time, we're just going to keep changing the neighborhoods. That's fine, as long as the guidelines change. But until the guidelines change, we don't do that. And I would think there's a good reason we don't do that. People buy into this town expecting, well, the North Forty is a good example. People buy into this town expecting things to remain the same. Well, we know things don't remain the same. But this house is dramatically different than the neighborhood. It is larger by a substantial size. It has, none of this should have been a surprise to anybody. So if somebody comes in and says, "I know we're not abiding by your guidelines, but nevertheless, here's why you should ignore your guidelines," at least that would be an intel, well, it wouldn't be a very successful argument, but it would acknowledge the guidelines. In essence, to say you didn't know about the guidelines, which is implicit in what you're saying, strikes me as odd. But in any event, I think the house is too big. I think it doesn't blend into the neighborhood at all. I have no trouble with the roof. We have approved standing metal roofs before. So my problem with this house is not based upon the standing metal roof. I think in some instances it's quite good. And were this house to be built as it's designed, it would probably be a good design. But for the reasons Commissioner Kane said, and if one looks at the residential design guidelines, the reasons are quite obvious. So I'm not going to support this application.
All right. I will add my comments. Being that this is the largest house in the immediate area, it magnifies two issues for me. One, you're on a predominant corner, so you have a greater visual impact on top of being the largest house in the neighborhood. And the style and the materials are not quite consistent with the neighborhood context. I have in the past supported metal roofs. I think I could in this case, but I would like to see a metal shingle roof. I think it would blend a little better, just as Larry Cannon stated per Exhibit 7. So those are my comments. So I would not be able to render an approval tonight. Commissioner Erickson?
In the interest of time, I would just say that I would agree with the essence of what Commissioner O'Donnell said.
Would anybody like to entertain a motion unless I have further comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I will move that we deny the application for architecture and site application, S-15059, for the, all the reasons we've stated. But boiling it down to its essence, it does not comply with the residential guidelines. In particular, the size is so much greater than the rest of the neighborhood. The style is so much significantly different than the neighborhood. And then the other reasons that we have talked that pan out from that. So I would move that we deny the application.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Erickson?
I'll second the motion.
All right. I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are appeal rights. Thank you, Chair Padami. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
All right. As we move to item number eight, I will be recusing myself from this item due to a perceived conflict of interest. My business location is within 500 feet of this project application. Vice Chair Kane will preside and maintain order, and I will return for item number nine.
I have to wait for your lead. We will now consider agenda item number eight. It's 212 to 216 North Santa Cruz Avenue, conditional use permit application U-16001, architecture and site application S-16002. Requesting approval of exterior modifications to an existing commercial building and approval for new fitness studio, Soul Cycle, with group exercise classes on property zone C2. This is APN 52904085. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the site? Commissioners, do we have any disclosures to provide? Good. Ms. Puga, I understand you will be presenting the staff report this evening.
That's correct. Good evening, commissioners. The applicant, Soul Cycle, is requesting approval for exterior modifications to an existing commercial building and approval to operate a fitness use with group exercise classes on property zone C2. The applicant is proposing to merge three of the existing four tenant spaces into one 3,589-square-foot space with an adjacent 805-square-foot space to remain. The first part of the proposal is a request to modify the storefront to a more modern style with architectural elements such as white metal panel, matte gray panel court space, and wood elements. The consulting architect reviewed the plans, visited the site, and had no recommendations for changes. The consulting architect did comment that while the proposed renovation of the building is more modern in treatment, by maintaining the stucco surround and existing cornice, it will provide a relationship with the buildings along North Santa Cruz Avenue. The second part of the proposal is a request to operate a group fitness with exercise classes. The applicant is requesting to operate from 5:30 a.m. until 10 p.m. Monday through Friday and 7 a.m. until 9 p.m. Saturday and Sunday. The commercial building has 11 parking spaces on site, credit for 14 parking spaces in the parking assessment district, and is proposing to create two new parking spaces at the rear of the building. The proposed use requires 24 parking spaces and reserves an additional three parking spaces for the future adjacent tenant. Conditions of approval have been recommended by staff regarding the maximum number of clients, instructors, and operating hours. There is one desk item before you this evening, which contains a public comment that was received after the distribution of the staff report. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Are there questions from the commission for staff? Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you for your great report, as usual, on this item. So with the, this is a parking-related question. So with the remaining 805 square feet that would be in the building, so gets divided into two spaces, this one and the remaining one, so there are three spaces left that are associated with that. Will that cause any limitations on what can go into that space that we should just be sensitive to?
So right now, that's calculated for one per 300 square feet for a retail use.
Okay. So, thank you.
Ms. Puga, we have a letter from a citizen, Ms. Calderon. And she points out that, well, number one, this has been our third cycle application, I think, in as many meetings, and we are thinking about and learning about the parking issue. The provision has been, what, 62, 62, 68 people or 68 parking spots in transit? And when I think about a cycling class arriving, 68 people, I think they said there are 57 bikes, but I count it 61. Maybe the others would be in reserve. But when these folks arrive, the other class will be coming out. And until the other class is gone, the arriving people have no place to, presumably, within these limits, have any place to park. My point is that this can run up to, as she points out, 114 spaces needed for that 15-minute period. Do you think, or does staff think, that we need to reexamine parking codes regarding high-turnover businesses that are unique to this, like indeed the cycle business? That's my question.
So I'll answer that. This did come up at the last hearing over at the Lester Lane site. And so staff has brought this up to the town manager and will be discussing this probably sometime in the near future with either the council or the policy committee to get direction from them on whether or not the code should be amended for this type of use.
It would seem we might need to rethink that. The second point that the lady makes in her letter, which I found very interesting, is that the parking spots, I guess in the back, she says, are not compliant with the town's parking code as they lack the U-shaped interval between each stall. So I guess that means there's single lines as opposed to the big old horseshoes that come out. And she says that she assumes all work shall conform to applicable town ordinances and that prior to final inspection, the tenant will be required to bring these spaces into compliance. I didn't know that they weren't. And maybe it is that they're not. That'll be one of my questions. But she says when, if they are not in compliance and if the U shape is the compliance, that will reduce the total amount of spaces by at least four. I don't know if this is accurate or not, but it can't be ignored. Are those spots currently not in compliance?
So currently, the spots are single striped, so they're not in compliance. Town code requires... Town code requires new parking spaces to be double striped. So as part of the architecture and site application, the commission may condition that these existing parking spaces are brought up to code and double striped. It's a conversation staff has had with the applicant, and believes that the parking spaces can be double striped without losing parking spaces, as the desk item had suggested.
And I'll offer a little bit of further reasoning to that effect. So the parking spaces are measured from, whether it's a single stripe or the U, from the center of that. So basically, those stripes will go away, U will go around them, and they will have the same width as they currently have, so no parking spaces will be removed.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Puga. Other questions for staff? Commissioner?
I just want to understand that last answer. If you have a single line, and you measure it from single line to single line, you get one measurement. If you have a double line, and you measure it from the middle, you get a different measurement. And to the extent that you don't count from the middle to the extent of the second line, you lose space for the parking. And that occurs on both sides, right?
So I'll try to further clarify. You have a single stripe that's, let's say, four inches wide. The parking space is to the center of that stripe, so you have a width that goes into the stripes. When you do the U around that, the stripe is removed, but the U is expanded, but the dimension that the town code uses is to the center of those U's. So you don't actually lose any distance at all over the single stripes.
Second line of the U, however, you're saying that's not further than if I only had a single line?
It is further, but we're still measuring from the center of the U. So those points don't change. It's just a U, and if I was an artist, I'd try to draw it up for you really quick, but I am not. But I'll see what I can do, maybe during the public testimony.
Okay, and you're not an artist, and I'm not following real well. So I'm not going to beat to that horse. Just one more question then. So when two cars now park next to each other, and we have the double lines on each side, you're saying there is no difference in that dimension, the width, than if there were a single line?
Correct, based on how we measure the double lines.
Depending on how you measure the double line?
No, because of how we measure the U-shaped lines. They're measured from the center of the U. So Mr. Schultz is going to attempt to draw something up, and then we'll have that later.
A lawyer draws something, I'm worried.
Commissioner Hootis?
Just to clarify, from my understanding, when considering a CUP, does the town require parking spaces to be brought up to code? And, you know, I know that we could, but does that generally happen?
I don't know generally that this is an issue, because many businesses, over the years, upgrade their parking lots, and so they have predominantly caught up to all having the U-shaped lines. So I don't have a good comparison for you, frankly, but I think it would be appropriate here to require the U-shaped striping, which is what is proposed for the two new spaces that they are creating.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a question, which I assume will probably be for Mr. Paulson, as opposed to Ms. Puga, after he finishes his drawing. I already did the drawing for Commissioner O'Donnell. So I searched the code. So this particular use is classified as retail, correct? It's a retail use?
This is a group exercise class use, yes. So it's not a strictly retail use. There is a retail component, as I understand it, and Ms. Puga can correct that.
No, but I'm talking about how we would classify it in the code. So there's definitions in the code, so it's going to-- it has to fit one of those-- it has to be fitted to one of those definitions, correct?
Not explicitly, because there are uses that don't fit in office, personal service, retail. So this is one that requires a CUP. There is not a specific definition for what group fitness classes are.
Okay, so then, refresh my memory. So then, what do we use to calculate parking requirements?
From a parking perspective, we do use the retail, because that is the base use that we use to calculate those. So the one per 300 is how we derive how many students and/or instructors you can have on a site, based on the number of parking spaces, in this case, onsite and in the district.
Okay, so I'm just trying to be sure I understand. So we will condition a use that is a-- I'm just trying to be sure I understand-- that is a common use, not one defined in the code specifically, so it's one that we make up outside of the code. But we will use a defined use in the code to determine the parking, because we don't acknowledge it in the code, and therefore aren't explicit about what we use. And so the only-- so if they had-- so the only option we have is then, if they have, let's say, 10 feet of square footage devoted to retail, and the other use is not noted in the thing, then the only option we have is to use the retail guidelines for determining the parking.
We use the retail guidelines for determining parking, excuse me, because they're the most restrictive in that district. So the one per 300 is for retail, personal service, and other uses. So that's why we typically use the one per 300 for parking, because it is the most restrictive requires the most parking.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
The fact that it's the most restrictive does not mean that it has been designed for the particular use, does it?
That is correct.
And in fact, what we're doing now is trying to anticipate, or trying to draft something to cover the situation, because we've run into it at least twice before, one of which with really bad results, one of which we're waiting for. So in lieu of having any factual evidence to support the parking, we're going to use the most restrictive, even though not drafted for the use. Is that right?
Based on our current code, that is what we're using. And I'm not sure if the town attorney has any further input.
Well, let me just add before he does. No, I want him to have the whole picture when he does. The use permit language, of course, is not restricted to just the parking. The use permit requires certain conditions. Among the conditions are, the use is essential or desirable, the proposed use will not impair the integrity or character, the proposed use is in harmony with the general plan and the purpose of the town code. So if we, for example, were to believe that the retail parking is not applicable because of the unfortunate information we've now had over the last several months, we might say that the retail parking is the retail parking. But in this case, the grounds for the use permit might be found against it. I guess that's a question.
Town attorney?
That certainly could be part of your deliberations, if that's what you find.
Other questions of staff? Thank you, Ms. Puga. I'll now invite comments, public testimony portion of the hearing, allow the applicant-- I don't. That's what he said. And allow the applicant 10 minutes to address the commission, but I have no idea who the applicant is or who the speaker will be. Would you turn in a speaker card, please? State your name and address, please.
My name is Alan Cook, and my address is 609 Greenwich Street, New York, New York.
You're from New York?
I am.
Welcome to Los Gatos.
Pleased to be here, finally. I run our design team at Soul Cycle, work for Soul Cycle, have been an employee there for about five years. And we have been looking to, you know, we've been looking for a location in Los Gatos for almost that entire time that I've been at Soul. We've been really excited about, you know, bringing our business and our brand to this community. We think we'll do very, very well, and also, you know, add, you know, add a very bright spot to a very amazing retail corridor that already exists here on Santa Cruz Avenue. So just want to give you guys some quick background on what Soul Cycle is. It sounds like you already may have some familiarity with, you know, what spinning is, but we offer a 45-minute indoor spinning class. We are a pay-per-class model. We do not offer a membership. Each class is roughly $30 a class. Our riders, you know, are of all walks of life, and our intent is simply to, you know, improve personal fitness and create a community via, you know, the riders who, you know, who participate in our classes. I could speak a little bit about the facade. Our design aesthetic trends more to the modern and contemporary look, as you guys have noted from our presentation. We've, you know, we've been very successful in delivering similar facade applications at past locations, and also in very rich kind of historic districts. We feel very strongly that our facade and our proposed renovation will, you know, add the level of diversity, which is consistent with the guidelines that are set forth and, you know, by the town. And, you know, that being said, I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have. I can go on and on about the business, or our aesthetic, or, you know, how we operate and what have you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Questions for Mr. Cook. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I assume that you have locations all over the United States?
We do, mostly the east and west coast. We're kind of, you know, we're centrally located in the New York metro area, and here in San Francisco as well, and Southern California and Los Angeles.
Are you located in any place that is comparable to a suburban location like Los Gatos is?
Sure, we are. To name a few, I would say Short Hills, New Jersey. We're also located in Larkspur, in Marin County, here at the Country Mart. We're in Palo Alto, at Stanford Mall. We're-- and located in several small communities in the metro area in New York as well, Scarsdale, Ry Ridge, Bronxville, you know, communities that are similar, that have a, you know, very historic character and a downtown character.
The purpose of my question, and thank you for that answer, that's helpful, is my experience, at least recently, has been that operations like yours have-- we've used parking requirements that seem not to fit. We've done two recently. One remains to be seen, but at least is in a shopping center, so I'm hopeful. In another, it is located in a very small, what somebody might call a strip center, and has parking pouring out all over the neighborhood. And that, nevertheless, is in compliance with our retail parking ordinance. Therefore, we're concerned. Now, you've had an opportunity, I guess, to see the same letter we got this afternoon. The writer of that letter raises what I think are credible points, based only on my experience here. How do you anticipate being able to handle the volume of turnover traffic and parking that you will have?
Sure. So as you can imagine, this topic is raised, or has been raised, at almost every single hearing, you know, where we've been required to, you know, acquire a CUP or some other, you know, conditional use. You know, it's interesting, and we see that same argument raised by, you know, folks like Mrs. Cardina, where, you know, we want to, you know, they say, hey, why don't you look at the worst case? If you've got 55 bikes, and you're running classes back-to-back, you know, your total load is going to be double the number of bikes. And what we've found in practice and in actuality, there are a lot of factors that bring that overall load down. You know, I can only be anecdotal. However, you know, several of the factors are the fact that classes simply aren't full. You know, we're not necessarily running a full class. Now, we could look at worst case, but the reality is our utilization, generally speaking, in this type of neighborhood is not 100%. It's going to be, best case, somewhere between 75 and 80. You get a lot of ride share. You get people who are walking. You get people who are, you know, using businesses that, you know, are sprinkled throughout the, you know, rest of the downtown, and will walk from a parking space that may be remote. You could get people riding bikes, obviously. There's a lot of bike traffic here in Los Gatos. So there are multiple factors. I'd also like to point out that, you know, for the purposes of our application, we can only apply the code that, you know, is written, and that's what we've done. Now, that being said, the parking field that's directly behind the space, you know, includes almost 125 spaces, plus or minus, which, as I understand it, is one of the largest parking fields behind a retail, you know, storefront group here in the town. So we think that, you know, considering our proposed location within the existing downtown fabric, we have a great opportunity to use, you know, a very large parking field. The spaces that we've included for our analysis are those that exist on the property itself, and we are proposing to add a couple spaces that are completely within the, you know, within the property lines themselves.
Thank you. Commissioner Hootis?
Thank you. I just wanted to drill down a little bit more into the math. So is it correct that the maximum is 57 students?
That's correct.
And five instructors?
So it's five employees, one instructor, four employees.
Okay, but there could be five people in addition to the 57?
That's correct.
So that would be 62?
Correct.
Okay. How-- and I understand the town code calculation, but from a business perspective, how do you get from 62 to 24 space? There are 24 spaces, correct? 24 plus 3 for the vacant on page 5 of 7, C Parking?
You know what? I'm not prepared to answer that question. I can only assume that that is calculation rooted in the code itself.
I understand the calculation of the 24.
Uh-huh.
But from a business perspective, could you maybe explain how you get from 62 to 24? Or if 24 isn't the correct number, what is the correct number?
In terms of the spaces that we actually need to run our business?
Exactly.
I got it. So like I said, you know, I think, without being too anecdotal, we're going to see a slight reduction in our overall utilization. So if we have 57 bikes, and we have four plus-one employees, and we're, you know, we need a total of 62 spaces, I would say that, you know, plus or minus each, for each class, you know, you're looking in the vicinity of, you know, 40 to 50 spaces realistically. So from a practical perspective, although we're applying the code, and we're looking at what we can, you know, what we're legally obligated to provide, you know, we have that, plus we have, you know, some amount of additional parking as a function of that field. So we're, you know, we have done some, you know, again, anecdotal studies to see how much parking is available in that field at any time of day, and we do believe that, given how we structure our classes throughout the day, that we're going to be very, very, very much in the clear for this, you know, for this particular location.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
You've stated two things, or among others, but two things. One, your typical use is more like 75% than 100%. On the other hand, you're asking for 100%. The other thing you've said is that you will have 62 people there, and if it's 100%, you have five people that work for you, so I assume they're going to be there a lot.
A lot.
Then you're going to hope that you fill pretty much the number of bicycles you have, and then you're going to have turnover. And I understand your answer when you say, well, I looked at your ordinance, and that's what they require for retail. You also may know that I'm concerned whether that's the right thing we ought to be using. So I guess I'm asking you for your best argument on the total number of spaces, considering your turnover, that you're going to need. So if you have, for example, 50 people cycling, and 50 people coming in immediately thereafter, I can think of the old salad movies, what it would look like, but you're, you know, I would assume you'd need some breathing space to allow that coming and going, but we don't have that. So I'm wondering, because it is quite possible, that we may not be satisfied with this, and so I'm asking you for any suggestions you have on how we could feel better about the traffic impacts, the parking impacts, which you will have unless you're wildly unsuccessful, based on what we've done in the last two applications. So could you defend something, or agree to some reduction?
Sure. You know, I would rather not offer a reduction, or give you guys an exact figure. I'd much rather stick to, you know, what we've been asked to do relative to the code. But I understand the concern, I understand what you guys are asking, and I think the best argument in this specific-- And I think the best argument in this specific case is to look at, you know, practically speaking, what is available for this location in the buildings that, but the parking lot, you know, immediately behind this location. I'd also go on to say that, you know, most of our classes and most of the classes where we receive the highest amount of utilization, you know, whether it be higher, closer to 80% or 100, occur very early in the morning and very late in the evening. And especially very early in the, in the morning, you know, most of our classes start at 6:30, 7 o'clock. Don't have very much retail presence. You don't, you know, a lot of the retail businesses downtown are opening around, you know, 10 o'clock or what have you. So we're getting, we're, we're making the best use of that parking lot when they're, you know, when it is completely empty. And that, that's also something that we've seen in other locations as well.
We are all intimately familiar with that parking lot because we live here.
Right.
You're asking for hours that go till 10:00 PM on Monday through Friday. Have you ever looked for a parking spot on a, at 7 o'clock on almost any night? We have restaurants in town. If we have 50 students of yours at 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM, and I don't know whether you close at 10 or whether your last class is at 10, I guess you close at 10. Have you any reason to believe that that's going to work?
So, when, in the, in the past, when we've had businesses of ours that have had issues, you know, our, our request is always to ask for hours that will allow us to create a class schedule to accommodate what's happening in reality. So whether we run a class at, you know, 10:00 PM is yet to be determined, but we want the flexibility, we're, we're requesting the flexibility to be able to structure classes that, you know, will, will actually work both for our business and with, you know, with, with the town. You know, many of the locations that I mentioned earlier, Short Hills, Rye Ridge, Bronxville, they all have, you know, very, they have very similar, you know, business hours. There are a lot of restaurants that were, you know, that are adjacent to our space. And we've curated our schedule in those locations to make sure that, you know, we're, it's, it's actually working. We do get direct feedback from our writers, you know, relative to parking. If, if people can't show up, you know, if people are late for class, that's a big problem for us as well. So, you know, we, we, we have to, we have to be mindful of that as well for the success of, of our business.
Mr. Cook, I, I want to play with you. I think you're modest about your class attendance. Ms. Caldara attends your class in Palo Alto, which by the way is located at a giant shopping center with thousands and thousands of parking spaces. And she says if they publicize that facility, this facility, the way they publicize that facility, and they're very good at it, you will get back to back classes, full, full classes for very busy periods of the day. I'm just saying this is what she said. I think Commissioner O'Donnell said, what, unless you're wildly unsuccessful? I don't think that's your goal. I do appreciate your, your appreciation for the language on parking. You've referenced that a couple of times. I've, I've picked out some other language from the town's general plan. Are you familiar with, with this boy?
Roughly, yes.
Lots of good stuff in there. There's a provision, policy LU 9.2, which is regarding commercial industrial services. Maintain a variety of commercial services using a strong downtown commercial area combined with Los Gatos Boulevard and strong neighborhood commercial centers to meet the shopping needs, emphasis added, of residents to preserve the small downtown, small town atmosphere. It goes on to talk about preserve the character of downtown. It goes on to talk about meeting the shopping needs. It goes on to talk about goods and services for local residents while maintaining existing town identity, environment, and commercial vitality. Now, I don't know what they do in Short Hills or Scarsdale. Well, I used to, but not anymore. But what we're doing here is trying to preserve a downtown commercial shopping restaurant dining experience. And we haven't had 57 bicycle people. And if you are wildly successful, they'll be coming in from all over. And there's a question about, are we going to preserve the shopping experience? Is folks going to come in, ride the bicycle, get sweaty, don't want to be, go home? I don't, I'm not sure we're getting a good fit is, is my concern. And having read the general plan to pull all those things out, do you have a comment?
Sure. So, two things that I want to point out. Number one, I failed to mention that we do have a retail component at the front of our store. So, a part, a significant part of our business is selling retail apparel. And, you know, we're, we're including the amount of transparent storefront that we are to display our merchandise. And we do get a lot of, you know, we do get a lot of walk-ins, people who aren't riding simply to shop our fitness apparel. Our, it, that has also been somewhat successful. The other thing that I'll mention in, in a lot of similar neighborhoods relative to impact a local business and preserving what, what the code, you know, sets out to preserve is that the partnerships that we seek to create with other local businesses tend to be very strong. We do a lot of local partnerships, including ride sharing, you know, we, we, you know, we do, you know, a lot of trading and that sort of thing. Plus, you know, as a function of the fact that we are bringing the amount of people we may bring on a daily basis, a lot of times we find that that, that patronage will flow over to, you know, to the adjacent businesses. So I would argue that we will, in essence, promote the, the, the ability or the success of the local businesses by simply driving, driving that traffic. It's interesting, I, if I could go on, I could give a, a better example.
We're from New York. And what you just said is we're significant retail. You just put yourself in formula retail. You're not significant retail compared to the revenue on the, on the bicycles, right? You're not formula retail, are you?
Uh.
No, you're not. You don't want to be.
Okay.
It's not significant retail. You've got gym apparel, but the main business is the money you make on the cycles.
Correct.
The town attorney's going crazy, but I, I thought I heard formula retail, which is a whole nother set of hurdles you might not be familiar with, so I apologize. Other questions? Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, thank you. And I hope you appreciate the, the concerns that are being raised about parking. And I think as a town and a community, we're trying to do everything we can to keep the downtown vibrant. There are a few of these left. I grew up in New Jersey as well, came from a town that did have a vibrant downtown. I'm familiar with Short Hills and I think it's a little bit different kind of a layout. Yeah. But what I, I, you know, the, the concern that I have is about an extreme parking situation that would crowd out the other businesses during certain hours. And it's not all the hours. And so, you know, if we reach a point where we're not going to approve this, I would ask whether you would consider varying the occupancy by hour? And then I'll ask staff whether that's something that, that is feasible as well. Because certainly at 5:30 in the morning or six or, you know, until certain times, that maximum occupancy, I don't think would be a problem. But at other times, I think there could be a significant issue with, with crowding out other parking. Would you consider variable occupancy by, by hours?
We would consider it. I, I would strongly prefer not to and would, would restate what I stated earlier, and that is give us the opportunity to adjust our class schedule to, you know, realistically respond to what is, what is happening. The first, the first, if we call it a concession that, that I would, I would make is that we would like to look at the spacing between classes, as Ms. Cardina pointed out first, rather than a potential blackout period, you know, just to allow a smoother transition between classes. And, you know, we may be able to go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Cook. We'll open the public portion of the hearing and after which you'll have five minutes to respond. I invite comments from members of the public. If you've not already turned in a speaker card, please do so at this time. When you call to speak, remember to state your name and address for the record and adjust the microphone that you can speak directly into it. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. When the yellow warning light comes on, you'll have 30 seconds left. I have a card from Marie Risto. Ms. Risto?
Hi, Maria Risto, 85 Broadway. You did cover a lot of my concerns. And as you know, two weeks ago when you were considering another studio, I wasn't able to make the meeting, but I had sent in, you know, kind of a, a sense of incredulousness that we have, we don't really have on the books, a realistic way to deal with fitness studios. And when we say one space for every three participants, I mean, I belong to a gym. I've never driven there. I am one of about four or five people who ride their bike there, so I know people don't walk and bike to the gyms usually, which is insane. But I'm not sure exactly how we can deal with this. I think the town's going to have to look at a different parking formula. But another thing is these fitness studios can take it upon themselves to tell their attendees, look, you're sitting in class, two out of three of you don't get a parking space. So take your fitness level up a little bit and ride your bike or walk or Uber or car share. But to say, look, there's a field of parking behind us, I know from experience that that lot is absolutely jam packed at lunchtime and it's jam packed in the evening. And it'll be a problem if their attendees can't park and are late for class, but it'll also be a problem for everybody else if they get there and have the spaces. So I think if we're going to approve a business that says we get 19 spaces for up to 57 participants, you know that that's not going to work. So, one suggestion I have is on several CUPs on a variety of issues, there've been six month follow-ups where there's a set of conditions and then the applicant comes back and you evaluate in six months how it worked. I don't know if it's possible to say, look, can you limit yourself to 30 bikes right now? And let's see what happens. And if it's not an issue, or if they have a program that shows people are doing something other than filling up another lot, that you can add bikes if it's not an issue. And I don't know how big their other studios are, but it seems like right now, we've got fitness studios opening up every other month. It's the new nail salon, which, you know, from a health perspective, yay. But I think this is not going to end. And unless, as long as we're sitting here saying, gee, we don't know what to do about it, well, let's approve this one. Gee, we don't know what to do about it, let's approve the next one. I think some things can be put in place on a conditional use permit, even if the town says this is enough parking. Let's have bike racks put out there for at least 20 bikes. There's parking, there's bike racks downtown, but not nearly enough if we're expecting people to get there in a way different than a car.
Thank you, Ms. Risto. Questions? Seeing none. Mr. Morimoto?
Ed Morimoto, 460 Monterey Avenue. And let me say, I'm delighted to be speaking about something other than North 40 for a change. But as such, I'm probably not as prepared as usual, so I'll apologize if I ramble a bit. But I had just realized that this was on the agenda and actually through a number of weird intersections with my personal interests in life, it seemed appropriate for me to speak. My only significant time outside of the San Francisco Bay area has been the 12 years I lived in New York. I actually happen to live literally around the corner from the original SoulCycle location in the Upper West Side. My office looks down upon the Tribeca location. And so as far as the type of business that I might want to be in my town, Los Gatos being, you know, the place I've lived longer than anywhere else, you know, I have nothing but positive things to say about it. To the comment about, is this the type of business that fits the character of our downtown? I live relatively close to the site and, I mean, I guess, you know, to the point that was made actually on one of the earlier agenda items, you know, I think that our downtown, to a certain extent, should be reflective of our time. And if I look at just the amount of yoga pants and spandex that I see walking up and down the downtown, I have a hard time saying that something like this is not in fact in character with our town. But actually, the thing I wanted to speak most about, as this has become a very big discussion around parking, and Ms. Risto kind of stole my thunder, but also, you know, in my time in New York, I also happened to be there during the Renaissance of cycling as a form of transportation. And during that time, there was a controversial policy passed around bicycle parking for buildings and commercial areas within, within the city. And I think this is a little bit like that, in the sense of, I agree with Ms. Risto, as a person who uses a bicycle to get around town, we do have a relative paucity of bicycle parking. And it seems hard to imagine a case where we shouldn't be thinking about this more, given that we're talking about a potential parking shortage for a stationary cycling studio. On a section of Santa Cruz Avenue that happens to have very wide sidewalks, potentially has space in the rear where there could be also more bicycle parking. So although I don't like the, if you build it, they will come kind of argument, perhaps this is an opportunity for us to say, maybe if we build it, maybe they will come. And when we think about parking, the conversation is not so much exclusively about cars, but really the multi modes of, of transportation, I think that we would all like our town to use for establishments like this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? I'm sorry for messing up your name, Mr. Morimoto. I don't read as well as I used to, I guess. Ms. Lee Cantana?
Vice Chair. I would ask you to read the beginning of the zoning code that deals with conditional use permits. There's, I don't remember the statements exactly, but it's that you may approve a conditional use permit if, and it goes on, and it gives the reason why we have conditional use permits in the first place, that for different, certain uses, there may be impacts that are not associated with uses that are permitted by right. And those should be able to be either conditioned adequately in the conditional use permit or the conditional use permit should not be approved. Some of the previous speakers put forward some possible solutions, but my concern is that how do you monitor that to make sure that what you are proposing can actually, does actually work by the time that you bring it back for reconsideration? And if, if you find somehow that you can monitor that and it doesn't work, what happens to the business? Are they forced to close or are we still going to have them? And parking in the downtown is a very big problem. And I would encourage people to walk and to ride bikes, but the reality is that a lot of people don't. And it would, this is, the parking issue to me is something that until we get the public to use bikes and walk more, then we do have to deal with the parking issue.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Cantana? Seeing none. Thank you very much. I have no other speaker cards at the moment, so I invite Mr. Cook back to talk to us for five more minutes.
You'd like me to speak first? Sorry.
As opposed to who?
Okay. I thought you guys were going to ask me some questions, so...
No, you have five minutes to rebut whatever has been said or whatever additional information you'd like to add.
Okay. So, Joey McCarthy, who is our landlord, just pointed out something, you know, very important. And that is that, you know, if we, if we were to, he understands it a little bit better than I.
I'll need a speaker card, please.
Love for him to, to speak, okay.
I'll need a speaker card. Yeah, when you're done.
So, the parking is one per, or three stalls per bike. It's not one per 300, I think is a key factor here. So, the way the parking is calced is not per square foot, it's per bike. Does that make sense?
Staff can weigh in now and during their time. It's the backwards calculation of, we start at one per 300, they have so many spaces, parking spaces, and so they can have so many... so many students at one per, one parking space for every three students, and one for every instructor. So that is true. But it is, the starting calculation is, you have X parking spaces based on the one per 300.
Did that come off their time? Okay.
So we have 19 spaces times 300 square feet. 5,700 square feet. And the space is only 300, or 3,800 square feet. So it's almost providing twice the amount of parking that retail requires.
So I can weigh in again, that's not accurate. The 3,800 square foot space would require roughly 13 spaces for that site, and then you have another 800, so it's 16 square feet, or 16 parking spaces they do have because they are in the parking district. They have additional spaces in the parking assessment district, so they have additional credits above and beyond that. And I will do an actual calculation, because the total square footage is 4,394 onsite.
That's for the building, so it's 3,800 for the space, right? Then we have 24 stalls provided.
If the entire four tenant spaces were retail, the parking requirement would be 15 parking spaces.
Thank you. None of that came off the applicant's time, did it? All right. Go ahead, Mr. McCarthy.
So on 3,800 square feet, we're providing 24 parking stalls. Correct?
They are using some of their excess parking that they have in the district to increase the number of bicycles that can be, the stationary bicycles that can be in this business.
And that's the way downtown works. So when we were calculating, and if you look in the staff report, that's how the number of parking stalls that are required are calculated. So that's, I mean, the rules of downtown. A lot of buildings don't have any physical parking on their property. It's all in the district. So we have parking stalls on our property, and we're using parking in the district. Does that make sense?
Well, the compliance with the code makes sense, yes. We're saying maybe the code doesn't make sense for the compliance.
But that's saying that you can't...
It's time to make a change. We're going to have 50 to 100 people looking for parking spots in an area where you can't currently, allegedly can't find a parking spot. That's our concern.
So can we put anything in the building?
I mean, that's going to be a mutual concern with a lot of angry customers.
Can we put anything in the building, then? That's just, in essence, saying that we can't develop it, or can't occupy it.
I don't think that's what we're saying. I'm asking you where we're going to put the other 50, 100 cars. And I'm going to withhold my comments and withdraw that one. Are there questions from the commissioners?
So to Vice Chair Kane, I would request that you give the applicant his five minutes to rebut, and then we ask questions of them, in fairness to the applicant.
I think the point here is that we're providing the adequate parking per the code, and the use that is going into this building is perfect for this building because of the onsite parking that we have that really isn't attainable anywhere else in the downtown. And we also have parking stalls in the district. So when you do the analysis, it's in the staff report, we have adequate parking, and we're following the rules of downtown and developing in the downtown. So I don't see any reason why you cannot, why you would not approve it if we're abiding by the code.
Questions for the speaker? You have additional time.
I mean, I'm not sure that I can add much more than you guys have already stated, but I would say, you know, for us, as SoulCycle is a business, as an applicant, you know, treat us fairly. We've done our best to follow the guidelines of the code, and as Joey demonstrated, we're providing above and beyond, you know, what a retail tenant would be required to provide at that location. And that, you know, we should keep in mind that we're going to see riders come from a varying number, or from a varying number of means, you know? We're not going to have 55 people showing up in a car. It's going, it will vary. That is the reality, based on, you know, what we've seen at all of our locations. And that, you know, if there is truly a significant parking issue, as some people have pointed out downtown, and if this lot is, in fact, overparked, you know, please kindly request, don't let SoulCycle be, you know, be where the buck stops. If this is a problem that has been identified previously, you know, give us an opportunity to, you know, open and operate our business, you know, as we've presented in compliance with the code. And, you know, if there is an opportunity later on down the road for us to, you know, participate in improving, you know, how the code may change or be applied in the future, you know, let that exist at that point.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Before filing your application, did you check what we had done the last couple of months on two applicants who wanted to have somewhat similar use?
We did not.
And so you didn't check what we said in the past about the difficulty with this use?
We did not.
Are you aware of any similar use in downtown?
I am not.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion of testimony. Turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion. Commissioner Hootis.
I had some questions for staff about parking. And I don't know which way to go with this. First question is about the field behind the store. How does that factor into this? And related to that, are there other ways to accommodate parking requirements for this kind of a business?
So the field of parking is, I believe, public parking lot behind the applicant's site. The applicant does have spaces on their property, which is the 11 plus 2 that they're adding. And Ms. Puga can jump in and correct me whenever I go astray. So the parking requirements are required to be provided onsite. And in downtown, typically, that's either onsite or, and/or, in the parking assessment district. In this case, the property has credits for the parking assessment district, which are 14. And so they have a total allotment with the 11 existing, the two they're going to do, and the 14 of 27 spaces onsite. The spaces in the parking field behind, or on the street, are not used to calculate parking that's provided for this specific site.
Okay. So the possibility of a business using more than 27 spaces, the 24 plus 3, that is not including space that may be available, or it is including that space?
The 27 total spaces?
Correct. Are some of those 27 in that field?
Some of those would conceptually be in that field, because the parking assessment district takes into consideration the public parking lots. Correct.
Okay. So you've calculated the fraction that they could occupy in that field?
They have credit for 14 spaces in the district, not necessarily in that parking field.
Okay. Another question I had is, is the three spaces per bike reasonable?
That has been the ratio that the town has used for a number of, not just fitness classes, but any group classes, whether that's art classes or cooking classes. And so that is something that has been raised, as has been raised this evening, at the last hearing for sure. And at that meeting, there was a condition placed on that, that if, after one year of operation, that they come back and be reviewed to see if there was any additional modifications to that use permit necessary. But we are also pursuing the opportunity to get further guidance from council on whether or not we should modify that requirement and create a different ratio.
So it's the position that it is reasonable, but there are some challenges to it, and we're thinking about raising it and studying it further. Is that correct?
We will be studying that issue, and it has been raised as a concern. And however, the applicant and staff's analysis is based on what we currently use for this type of use.
Just one other question. Within the context of a CUP, is it possible to bury the occupancy by hour?
It is possible. Enforcement of that, depending on the variation that you're looking at, and the varying times, could become challenging, but that is something that could be placed in the conditions of approval.
Commissioner Erickson.
So I don't have questions for staff, but I have some comments to make. It seems to me that we need to ensure, and I'm going to say some things that are obvious, but just to lead into some other things. We need to be able to ensure that we, when we make decisions, that we are contributing to maintaining the vitality, the economic vitality of the downtown area. And as that plays an important role in the overall economic vitality of the town, and what this community can achieve, and what it can be, what it can do for its citizens, and the quality of life that is represented in the town of Los Catos. Part of the vitality, part of maintaining economic vitality, seems like to me, is to be responsive in a timely manner to changes in business structure, business opportunities, types of businesses, and so forth. So while I would not have described it in as colorful a language as Mr. Morimoto, then I think he captured the essence in his description of an emerging type of business that has the potential, and is important, to contribute to the vitality of the town. So it is precisely the kind of business that should be located in the town to help meet that kind of goal. Now, that being said, I've been on the planning commission for eight years. In the first couple of years that I was on the planning commission, we were asked to consider conditional use permits for wine bars. And so this is wine bar version 2 for me. Why I say that is because we all came to the conclusion that wine bars were an emerging type of business, and that it contributed positively. But we didn't have a definition in the town, or guidelines, for wine bars. We had study sessions about it. We dealt with the issue, and we kind of winked and said, "Well, we don't want to punish people who apply." So we moved it forward and approved them. In good faith, as a planning commissioner, I voted for that, assuming that somewhere in less than seven years, we would actually have a modification to the alcohol policy in this town that would help us deal realistically with a positive business that needs to be attracted to and come to this town. So I'm not very optimistic about the fact that, in a timely manner, that will allow the town to be responsive to what I consider a good business line being added to the town, that we will get a reasonable resolution to what is a parking issue for this. So my, so that's where I am with this issue. So my position at this point in time is, and I do this reluctantly, would want to, I suppose, what the applicant and the landlord will consider, punish them, because I think we can make, and I would be happy to make the findings, and suggest we can make the findings, that this doesn't, that it does impair the integrity and character of the zone, and that it would be detrimental to the integrity, to the public, healthy, safe, and general welfare of the community, because we had public testimony from the applicant himself, that they predict they will need 40 to 50 spaces, and they only have 24 for this use. And my reason for wanting to deny this is, I would fully anticipate that the applicant would appeal the decision to the town council, so the town council will have to deal with this, rather than us saying, even though I actually agree to some extent with the applicant and the owner of the property, that they're meeting the code, and therefore, we really, we really probably may or may not have a basis on which to deny it, given that they're trying to, that they are complying with it, with the code, which is defective. But we need to get the council to help us be a little bit more responsive to changes that need to be made to make it possible for good businesses that contribute to the economic timeliness in shorter period of time than seven years.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I appreciate those comments. I think they're very considered, and I agree with most of them. Where you'd asked me what I didn't agree with, I couldn't tell you. But I know that there was a lot there. Joel Paulson said, "For this type of use," and of course, that's the question. What is this type of use? It's not really retail. It just isn't. And yet, that's what we use. So we use parking for retail. And it's not retail. So we say, "Well, gosh, what are we supposed to do then?" Well, the good news is, this is a use permit. We can deny a use permit when we believe that it's not adequate. The situation is not adequate. I don't want to deny this. I think this use could be quite good for downtown. But I will tell you right away, I also don't want to be sitting around talking to people with a parking that will occur from this use. I would rather see if the applicant can do anything to temper the use. We should have, as Commissioner Erickson has said, we should have better rules that apply to what appears to be a change in the business community, and a good change. We don't. And we haven't had it now for a number of years. We have seen, we've only seen two of these recently. One of them, from the neighbors at least, is a disaster. And yet, it complied with the retail. The other one is in a shopping center. Maybe it won't be so bad. But knowing that, we have to look at this and say, "Can we satisfy the use permit requirements?" I can't. So we have two choices. I, as a commissioner, I have two choices. I can either make a motion to deny the application stating the reasons for that, or I can invite the applicant to come up with something that will ameliorate these changes. We've been told that, golly, maybe they're only going to have 75% or 80%. Well, then, don't ask for 100%. That helps me right away. The spacing between the classes is looking for a disaster, I think, in those periods of time. Something can be done on that, scheduling of the classes. I can understand people wanting to make money, but that's not our problem. So we can either continue this matter, except that I've gotten no signal from the applicant that they would consider, on their own volition, making the changes. So I think Commissioner Erickson's right. Were we to deny this, the town council will have an opportunity to do what they want. So I throw that out. We've closed the public comments, the public hearing. Nevertheless, were the applicant willing to do something different to his application, I'm sure we would entertain, not listening to me, but I'm sure we would entertain a continuance. That not being the case, I'm prepared to make a motion if anybody wants to say something.
Commissioner Hootis.
So I have some further comments. This, to me, is a high-order problem. I think it's the kind of problem that we want to see, where we think there's going to be a business downtown that is very successful and vibrant, and maybe even a little bit different than what's existed before, thereby drawing other elements of business into downtown. So for those reasons, I would like to see a way for this to work. I think that there are some possibilities that have been raised that I think would be very important to pay attention to. One would be the nature of the classes and the hours, and potentially varying the class size by hour, being sensitive to the highest parking times in the downtown. I also think the arguments about spacing between classes... I also think the arguments about spacing between classes are reasonable as well. And, but also, I'd, I'd really love to hear a plan from the applicant in terms of how to encourage students not to use parking spaces, but to find other means to, to use the facility and to use the creativity that they have to come up with some ideas about encouraging students not to drive to these classes. And also, I think the idea about bike racks and other things would be very positive as well in terms of addressing the kind of issues that this application presents.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
My, my preference at the moment would be to continue this matter for a reasonable period of time, whether that's two weeks, three weeks, whatever it is, to give the applicant at least an opportunity, if the applicant wishes, to address some of the problems we've raised. The applicant may decide that this isn't fair or that economically they can't do it, and, and that's, that's their, their privilege. But as I say, I think this could be a good use for downtown, and I would not want to recommend that we deny it out of hand. So what I would like to do at the moment is move to continue this matter to a date certain or to allow the applicant to see if he wants to make any changes in the plan. We'd have to reopen the public hearing because comments could come in from both sides, but that would be my motion and.
Well, Commissioner, let's go for a date uncertain.
Well.
And to have it be resolved.
They have to notice, they have, as you know, if we do it to a date uncertain, they have to renotice, and I think it would be better to pick a date. If they need an earlier date than we pick, we can deal with that, but I, to renotice and.
Before we get there, I would suggest if, if that's the, the will of the, the commission is to just reopen it for that specific question, to ask if the applicant would like a continuance to try to work through these issues. If the applicant doesn't want that, then we don't have to worry.
Can the applicant come back up to the microphone, please? I'm reopening the public hearing to ask you one question. Would you be interested in continuing this matter along the lines that have been suggested to a date uncertain?
I think we would be open to, to continuing if we could get better guidance on what you guys think would be an appropriate number of bikes or if you have specific suggestions around the hours. Otherwise, I, I would suggest that, you know, we, we move to city council.
Okay. The problem in the past with specificity is it gets us in trouble.
Yeah.
We're looking for your best judgment to comply with the concerns that we've addressed tonight on the parking and, and also, you know, on whether or not it fits.
Sure.
There's nothing else like that in town. Does that maintain the character? But hang on, I look to my commissioners for comments on what I just said. Maybe they don't agree.
Well, we've said a number of things, so you, you've heard them, I know, one of which was suggested hours. We have certain hours that are more intense with parking uses downtown than other hours. So that's something that you could explore. We've also talked about the number of, of bikes, and you've said, maybe I'm not hearing you correctly, but notwithstanding your intention to get 100%, it's your experience that that doesn't always happen and maybe you could accept a, a lower number. Now, I, I wouldn't want that, well, that's something else that could be explored. I, I think if you, if in this interval time, you have a chance to look at the two applications that we've already had before us and see, you might be better advised as to the problem we're really dealing with. So as much as we'd like to see your use downtown, I think if you could educate yourself as to the particular problems you'd have, you realize the difficulty we have. So if, you know, as, as the chair says, we can't give you specifics so you come in and say, I've addressed the specifics, therefore you're approving it. But I think we, and some of my fellow commissioners may, may have more things to say, but if you feel that you have a better opportunity by just simply going to the council, we're not going to take that personally, so you make up your mind.
I, I think our, I think our fear is that, you know, we, we delay here, you know, to a later date, only to have the same exact conversation when, you know, the, the people who, you know, are ultimately going to decide, you know, the specifics around the parking lie at the town council. I, my, our hope here was that we would be viewed fairly, given the existing code, which we've done our very best job to, to do, and I think we're, 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 we're at odds there. So if, listen, we, like I said, we would be happy to continue here if we could get a, a better level of, better level of guidance on what you, you guys think specifically would be acceptable, and if, if we can't get that, then I, I would suggest we just move to the council.
Commissioner Erickson.
So a question for the vice chair for, just a moment before you close it. Is it permissible to ask the applicant a question at this moment?
To what end? I don't want to reopen a dialogue, but give me an idea where we want to go.
Well, I, I wanted to ask a specific question of them that would help, help inform me on whether, to provide guidance to the question that he has posed.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go.
Okay. So presently in your business plan, you have 57 bikes. How far could you reduce the number of bikes without jeopardizing the integrity of the business plan?
Fifty-five.
Thank you.
So let's go back to where we were. You think there's a point in continuing this, or would you like a decision?
Like I said before, I, I think unless you guys can give us some specifics or very specifically state, you know, how many, how many bikes you would allow per parking stall as an example, then, you know, I, I think we would, we would just defer to the council.
And you just said 55. It's your break even.
Correct.
You'll leave a full house. I mean, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I look to the commission for comments or a motion. I'm closing the public hearing. Commissioner Erickson.
So the reason for asking my question is I got an answer that I think would, would suggest to us there's no reason for continuing this matter.
That's a good question.
And I, I respect the, I respect the answer, but I just wanted to be sure that we weren't doing what they were suggesting we might be doing, and that's just continuing it for the sake of continuing it and then dragging on what would be the ultimate decision.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have a motion. We have before us an architectural and site application and a conditional use permit application. My motion will be to grant the, I don't know if you can split them. Ask for advice of council, they, they both go together. So my, my motion then would be to deny the applications on the basis that it is not a retail use, it is not consistent with the downtown's desire and the general plan's desire of retail uses. I could not make the finding that it's categorically exempt. The recommendation is that it's categorically exempt because it's an, of existing facilities. I think it's a total change of use. It goes from retail to whatever this use is, which is not retail. So I couldn't make the finding necessary for categorically exemption. I couldn't make the finding that it is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare because the parking would be so bad. I can't make the finding that the use will not impair integrity and character of the zone, since it's a retail zone and this is not a retail use. I cannot make the finding that the property is in harmony with the various elements or objectives of the general plan and the purposes of the town code for the reasons previously stated. Based on that, I would move to deny the applications.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Erickson.
I'll second.
Discussion? Let's call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is successful, three to one. Commissioner Hudes voting nay. Mr. Paulson, are there, are there redress rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
And I will gleefully turn the gavel back over to the chair.
All right, we're moving over to item number nine, which is 307 West Main Street, Architecture and Site Application S-16-009, requesting approval to construct a second story addition to an existing single-family residence and to exceed the maximum allowable floor area on property zoned R-1DLHP APN 510-45-083. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll look to staff for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Badami. Ms. Pineda's last day helping us out was today, so I will be taking this forward. Before you, this evening, you have an application for a, an existing single-family home that currently exceeds the FAR. The applicant's proposing to construct a 295 square foot addition to an existing second story, which will, which means that the, the project will further exceed the floor area ratio. This residence is, was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Committee twice, this addition, and following some modifications by the applicant, the Historic Preservation Committee recommended approval of the proposed project. Staff has reviewed the application, reviewed the circumstances in the immediate neighborhood, and this house would be the fourth largest in terms of square footage and also have the fourth largest FAR, so the other three above them exceed the FAR by more than what is proposed and exceed the square footage by more than what is proposed, even with the addition. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission follow the actions in the staff report in approving the architecture and site application. I did want to note one error in the application. In the table on page four, there is a reference to a three-story house on 305 West Main Street. That is in fact a two-story house, and I apologize for the error, and that concludes staff's report, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Any questions of Mr. Paulson? Seeing none. All right. We will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the commission, and Mr. Play will be speaking.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jay Plep, architect for the project and the owner and understanding Lori Howard are here tonight, too. We feel that this project is a sensible proposal, you know, considering the context of the neighborhood, and we also believe it's well-designed and fits into the. Is that better? Okay. Should I start over? Okay. We believe that, we've worked with staff all along from the inception of the project, you know, to come up with a, a solution that takes into account the, the design guidelines of the town. We believe it's a sensible project that fits into the context of the neighborhood. We are not asking to go beyond the limits of houses that already exist there. You know, we're a long way from those limits, and I think, you know, with staff wanting to recommend approval, that, that's what we're here tonight, to ask for your approval for this project the way it's designed.
Thank you, Mr. Play. Are you done with your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Play? Seeing none, thank you. I don't believe we have any speaker cards for members of the public. If you like, you can have five more minutes. It looks like you're done. Okay? Sir?
Thanks for the consideration and thanks for the process, actually. Dane Howard, I live at 307 West Main, and it's been a great education just going through the process. We've been well-guided by some educated architects, and what's been really helpful for us is being able to go through, getting, even one of our neighbors came down to support our project, this Lou Frigno, who lives across the street. So there's been a lot of construction in, in and around the area, as you know, and so we've lived there eight years and we've seen a lot of the construction go up, and we just feel like we've been properly guided through the process, and we appreciate all the considerations living in a, in a historic district and, and being able to get to this point. So I would say, from a designer standpoint and everything that I've seen, I've really appreciated just the minimal set. We're talking about a space that probably is going to fit right in here, if I, rough estimates, so it's 295 square feet, but it makes a big difference to the preciseness of our, of our lives as I work from home a lot, and so this is going to be really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Any questions? Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you, and I appreciate the, the thorough application and the considerations about community outreach. I believe the neighbor that would be most impacted is at 309 West Main Street. I didn't see a note from them. Have, have, have you received any comment from the neighbor at 309?
Yes, so Nora Kami, I believe, is right next door. She just finished a renovation herself, and she was the first person that we went to, and she enthusiastically said it, so it is, should be in the record. We do have a, a letter, so I apologize that it's not in front of you, but that was one of the first people that we asked.
Thank you. I may have missed that one, but that, that's one's important.
Thanks.
Vice Chair Kane.
Whether it's in the record or not, Commissioner, I'll substantiate or agree that the neighbor has spoken favorably of this project.
Any further questions for Mr. Howard? Seeing none, thank you very much. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Do commissioners have any questions, comments, motions? Commissioner Erickson.
I will move to approve Architectural Site Application S-16-009 with the conditions that are contained in Exhibit Three and the development plans that are in Exhibit Nine. In support of that motion, I can find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act as adopted by the town council and as noted in Exhibit Two. I can make the required findings as required by Section 29.40.05075(c) of the Town Code for granting an approval of the request for, to exceed the FAR, which is also noted in Exhibit Two. I can make the finding that the project complies with the residential design guidelines as noted in Exhibit Two, and I can make the required consideration as required by Section 2920.150 of the Town Code for granting approval of an architectural site application as noted in Exhibit Two, and I can make the required consideration as required by Section 2980.290, Part Two of the Town Code for an application within a historic district is also is noted in Exhibit Two.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hudes.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? I will call a question. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. It did not, okay?
No, I'm going to disagree with the motion. Let's make a point, if nothing else. Staff recommended approval of the application, made the findings required to exceed the FAR because the project is similar with other houses that have exceeded the FAR, and five excessive FARs don't make a good at FAR. I don't think that's a good precedent, but the project will go forward, and that's a good thing. I hope the point I'm trying to make is also a good thing.
Commissioner Kane, if you could just qualify something for me that went through the Historic Preservation Committee, was this not vetted through the HPC and that you all unanimously approved the FAR exception?
We approved their, their conformance with the historic guidelines and what we're trying to preserve from a historical perspective. I didn't get into the FAR at that point, but they came back twice and adopted mostly frontage A and S, and that's why they got my support with that. But the FAR now, as staff has represented, that it's okay because other folks did it, I guess that's the point I'm trying to make.
We, we appreciate that. Thank you. Passes four to one. Commissioner Kane, Vice Chair Kane. All right, unless a commis, I'm sorry, Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are. Thank you, Chair Badami. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Right, unless the commissioner needs. All right, unless the commissioner needs a break, I'm ready to move on to item number 10. All right, well, all right, we will move on to item number 10. The draft-proposed five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2021. Mr. Morley, I understand you'll be providing the staff report this evening.
Thank you very much, I will. Before you, you have an item that summarizes the draft capital improvement program, or CIP, for the next five years. The role of the planning commission associated with the draft CIP is to identify compliance or alignment with several documents within the town, including the general plan, the hillside-specific plan, the North Forty-specific plan, and the Albright-specific plan. You have that in front of you, as well as the entire proposed CIP, and staff is available for questions, should you have some?
Thank you, Mr. Morley. Vice Chair Kane?
This thing is three inches thick, that's it? That's your report? I did read it. I did read it.
Do you have questions?
No, I'm going to, question step, can I have, I have to ask questions? I'm ready to do something, but go ahead. Anybody got questions?
I'm sorry, I will ask if somebody asks questions. And I will ask Commissioner Erickson, he's got his hand up.
So this is really for whichever of the two of you. So on page two of the staff report, it says in the second paragraph that the draft's consistent with the general plan, the North Forty-specific plan, the Albright-specific plan, and the hillside-specific plan. I wasn't aware that we have an Albright-specific plan. We have a planned development there, is that correct?
For clarification, there is an Albright-specific plan. The initiative that was taken to the voters turned the approval into a specific plan, so it is actually a specific plan for the Albright project.
Oh. That happened after, well after we were involved, and after we had, after Mr. Schultz spent considerable part of his budget on outside council, I suppose.
Vice Chair Kane?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Erickson and was going to say that in the form of, when you acknowledged his questions, I agree with you that I didn't find any inconsistencies with the GP, the North Forty, or the hillside, but I didn't, I have no idea what's in the Albright. Does that mean I'm bad? I don't know what, I didn't know what the Albright was, and I was going to bring it up.
Yeah. I would say, I would say to Vice Chair Kane, it seems reasonable to me, it seems reasonably consistent with my recollection of what was adopted for the Albright-specific plan that I mistakenly believed was a planned development.
So we can, I can offer a little bit more on that. The Albright-specific plan, they were required to do those improvements, and the North Forty specific plan likewise will be required as developments come through to do those improvements. Some of them may be overlapping with things in the general plan, so those would not be accounted for in the CIP, but I would turn to Mr. Morley to offer any other guidance. Get my cheat sheet out here. So there are several elements of the general plan that you can identify specifically, so as the development occurs, the project does create and maintain a self-efficient, safe, efficient, well-designed roadway network, for example, and specific to the Albright plan and the Forty-specific plan.
Right. Any further questions? Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a comment, not a question. So I would say to Mr. Morley, as Director of Parks and Public Works, I've been on the planning commission for eight years now, so I've seen eight versions of this, and I've seen versions of it before I was on the planning commission because I just was foolish enough to read them before I was even on the planning commission, out of interest. And I would say that this one is well-done, as well-done are better, or better-done, if that's right in English, is more better than the ones prior, and in particular, it aligns as well as I can imagine that you can do, given constraints that Steve Conway and others put on you, in terms of available funds and other kinds of things that you can do, with needs which bubble up from time to time. And that makes it easy to find it consistent with the general plan, consistent with the Albright-specific plan, consistent with the North Forty-specific plan, and to a certain extent, the hillside-specific plan. So I would just say, congratulations to you and the staff who prepared it. It's very well-done. It's reflective of concerns which continually come in front of the commission, and particularly with respect to traffic and transportation challenges, and it's responsive, as responsive as it can be with the constraints, the financial constraints that you're facing. So, thank you.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Well, we have to open the public testimony, just in case somebody would like to add a comment, and seeing no one wishes to come forward, so I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, because nobody from the public wants to talk to us tonight. So I will look to Commissioner O'Donnell to continue with his proposed motion.
All right, I would move that we recommend to the city council, the town council, the approval of the five-year plan as submitted to us.
All right, do we have a second? Vice Chair Kane?
I will second that, but I will also ask Commissioner Erickson, did you just say anything bad about Steve Conway?
Did I do what?
Well, I don't know now, you sounded, I second the motion.
All right, any further discussion? I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Great, thank you, Mr. Morley. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you. At the last town council meeting, the Ilvisinata project that the planning commission saw and recommended denial of was denied. The council also provided some direction that the project should be a commercial project for that site, so that direction was given to the applicant, so we'll see what, if any, new projects come forward there. Also, as mentioned earlier on in the meeting, the North Forty story pole exception modification was denied, and there was a request to also hold a joint study information session to look at some of the existing documents from the general plan, the housing element, the specific plan, DIR that went with the specific plan to provide additional information to the council, planning commission, as well as the school boards. And so that study session, the details of that are coming together and filtering out to planning commissioners as we get those, and there'll be more details to come.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell, you may ask one question.
I assume the districts, the school districts you're talking about are Los Gatos Elementary and Los Gatos High School. Is there anybody else?
There are. So there's also the Cambrian and the Campbell districts, because they are, they also have district area in the northern section of the North Forty-specific plan area.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
With regard to the North Forty and the story poles, at the hearing a few weeks ago, I asked the question about whether the story poles were in compliance, and the answer I got back was that they were not, but they would be at some time in the future. Are they in compliance now, and were they in compliance prior to the council meeting?
So I'll provide a little background there. Also, the applicant requested a modification to their original exception, so the modification that they were requesting, those poles were up prior to the April 19th town council meeting, but the modification request was denied, so they will have to go back to the original modification that was approved in February. So there are additional poles and netting in certain places where flags were placed will have to be put up.
So again, are, is it now in compliance?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Members of the audience, thank you for your participation and attendance this evening. We appreciate it. Both of you. Commissioner Erickson, you have a question?
So just for the record, in response to Commissioner Kane, Mr. Conway is one of my most favorite and competent members of the staff, and easily the most entertaining.
Commissioner Erickson, thank you for that clarification, and I hope he's listening.
It's Vice Chair Kane, and don't ever say anything bad about Steve.
All right. Commissioners and staff, thank you for your time and hard work. This meeting is adjourned.